...dedication since February 2nd of 1984. Served as an inspiration to us all and her example of selfless service is a true testament to the spirit of our community and the dedication to public service. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Larry Cuffee Jr. of the City of Virginia along with the dedicated members of the City Council of the City of Virginia do hereby claim that an award will be given at the Elks Lodge during the National Crime Victims Rights Week event on April 12th, 2025 honoring the remarkable public service of Jean Olson. In testimony I have unto set in my hand and cause to be affixed to the great seal of the City of Virginia located in St. Louis County in the state of Minnesota. Congratulations, Jeanie. I worked a long time with you on the sexual sub program investigations. I've never worked with a more dedicated person in this program, so congratulations to you, Jean. I wish you were here to tip the whole appreciation for everything you've done. Okay, we'll move to item four on the agenda of the public forum. Has anyone on the council or in the audience like to speak before the council this evening? Seeing none, we move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be acted enacted by one motion unless a councillor or citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on March 22nd, 2025. Item 5.2 adoption of finance resolution number 25-007, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 approve the transit merchant license for Tamberly Eck doing business as hashtag, hashtag later tater. Item 5.4 approve the following travel requests. Item 5.4 A Stephanie Smith, Fire Marshal, to attend the Fire Inspector Number One Class April 21st till the 25th in Cottage Grove, Minnesota at a cost of $1,460. Item 5.4 B Jody Grivinoski, our Library Director, to attend the LAAC Conference in June 26th through July 1st, 2025, excuse me, June 26th, 2025 to July 1st, 2025 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania at no cost. Item 5.4 C Tyler Rooney from the Police Department to attend the background investigation and recruitment school, May 11th through the 13th, 2025 in Edina, Minnesota at a cost of $734. Item 5.4 D Matthew Holman and Eric Thompson of the Police Department to attend the active shooter, Level One Train the Trainer, July 14th through the 18th, 2025 in Hibbing, Minnesota at a cost of $1,664 and $224 respectively. Item 5.4 E Jennifer Kinney of the Police Department to attend the LEAP Conference, May 1st and 2nd, 2025 in Mankato, Minnesota at a cost of $1,102.20. These are all budgeted items in each department. Item 5.5 approve pay estimate number 11 to Kraus Anderson in the amount of $1,477,631.66 for the Public Safety Center. These are the consent agenda items for the council, looking for council action.
Will of the consent agenda as presented.
Counselor Freedley moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bachsneider.
Thank you. Can I please pull 5.4A and 5.4E for further discussion?
A and B?
A and E.
An E?
E is an elephant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to approve 5.1, 2, 3, and 4, for the exception, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could I pull 5.4C?
And 5.4C, okay, we'll hold in the balance the approval of the rest until we discuss these. So we'll start with 5.4A, Stephanie Smith going to the Fire Marshal School. Counselor Bachsneider.
Thank you. So in the job description for our Fire Marshal, it does state that the Fire Marshal must be a Minnesota State Fire Inspector One certified and qualified to approve fire sprinkler plans. And so we are sending the Fire Marshal, I'm assuming, to get certified. So I do have concerns knowing that we do have to be done at 6:00 PM though. I would recommend potentially moving this conversation. I'm assuming we'll have to recess this meeting, so at a time where we're not recessed, if the council's amenable to that, to have a further discussion on it.
Okay. Counselor Johnson?
I am not amenable to that. These are regularly, they're planned, they're part of the budget. It's something that she needs to do. That's why they're under the consent agenda because these are all things that obviously her supervisor as well as the city administrator have already approved as a necessity. I do not think it needs further discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to comment on that one? Counselor Paulson, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that when Chief Fredrickson was here and I asked the question and Deputy Chief Jonison, was this, did this candidate meet all the qualifications? I was told yes. So does the candidate not meet the qualifications?
Like Annie said, I think this is probably a discussion we'll have to have with the chiefs.
Wait, say that, I can't.
Like Counselor Bachsneider said, I think this is a discussion we need to have with the chiefs, so I think this is something we probably should table until we have that conversation.
Okay, I would be amenable to doing that. Thank you.
Your motion then would be to move to table or to?
I will move to table until the recessed session, assuming this is recessed meeting. Can I do that? To the Committee of the Whole.
We still have time, the class is from April 21st to the 25th, so we have time to move it to the Committee of the Whole if that's amenable to your motion.
I'll move it to table until the Committee of the Whole.
Is there support? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Counselor Beyondich.
Nope, I'm waiting for her.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Bachsneider?
Aye.
Freedley?
No.
Cuffee?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Motion to table, passes. Thank you. Now, item 5.4E, Counselor Bachsneider.
Thank you. I understand it's a budgeted item in here. I just know that budget times are tough. They're tough everywhere and so knowing that this is a training that we're not getting a certification from, it's not a required training for employment. I just have concerns with sending people for things that aren't required for any sort of certification. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this one, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that item before we move? Counselor Motley?
Britt, is that correct by Counselor Bachsneider that this isn't mandatory for this? Because I am all for the Police Department, but this isn't mandatory training?
Correct.
Do we do this on everybody all the time or is this just an exception?
This is the first time I've ever seen this one.
First time, yeah, okay. In that case, I will be voting alongside Counselor Bachsneider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with respect to that and any other motions to move? Seeing none. Item 5.4C.
Thank you, Mayor. Page 32 of our packet, it says, will overtime or comp be incurred? It says a total of 22 hours. Is that overtime or comp time and what is the total that dollar value is not filled in? Page 32, it says, will overtime or comp time be incurred? And then it says yes. Total number of hours, 22.0 hours.
Sorry, I did not see that on there, so I usually check these and I missed that one. So it's like $40 an hour times the 22 would be additional. I believe I did it on the following calculation for the other travel request, but I missed this one, sorry.
So it's $880 for overtime and is it going to be taken in overtime pay or will it be taken in comp time pay? Normally that one of those is circled. Do we know?
Well, it says overtime, oh, yeah, I guess I'm not sure.
So until that's clarified, I'm not comfortable voting this through. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns, or motions regarding this item? We'll take item 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4B, 5.4D, and 5.5. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
By Counselor Motley, is there support? By Counselor Freedley, is there any further discussion on these items? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry. All of them. Okay, okay. Okay, so there's always a motion and a second for the first time and then, okay, is there any further discussion on those items? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, item 5.4, Stephanie Smith, Fire Marshal, to attend the Fire Inspector Class in Cottage Grove, Minnesota at a cost of $1,460. Is there a motion to approve?
I believe we made a motion to table.
That was tabled, did we move on that? Okay, so let's move to item 5.4C, Tyler Rooney, the Police Department, to attend the background investigation recruitment on May 11th through the 13th in Edina, Minnesota at a cost of $734.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? By Counselor Freedley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.4E, Jennifer Kinney, the Police Department, to attend the LEAP Conference, May 1st and 2nd, 2025 in Mankato at a cost of $1,102.20.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Freedley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Freedley?
Aye.
Cuffee?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Beyondich?
No.
Bachsneider?
No.
Motion fails 4-3, thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I made a mistake on my last vote. I meant to vote no on item C.
Okay, let's take, let's go back and take a look at item 5.4C. What was the original vote that you tallied in? All in favor, so you changing your vote to no? So all those in favor was aye.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Can that happen? Can we just change a vote after the vote?
Let me ask our attorney, Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, the answer to the question is generally you can't just change the vote. The action has been carried out. In this case, if Counselor Paulson wanted to note her objection or note her opinion for the record, I don't think that would cause any trouble simply because with a unanimous vote, the change in one vote wouldn't swing the ultimate result and so it would kind of be like a harmless error. And so I think we would leave the vote as it stands, but if the councillor wanted to note her change in opinion or the, her opinion for the record, it would be fine.
Is that your, is that your to object and voice for your opinion?
My apologies, I missed the number that, the letter that we were on and this was the one I had the question on, the comp time versus the overtime. So my apologies that if it's been done, it's done. Thank you.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you. Thank you for the point of order and we're moved on to the next item on the agenda which is appearances. Item 6.1 Jared Seibert, Revive Virginia, to request a food truck festival on September 20th, 2025. He's just here to see if we have any questions. Mr. Seibert, if you wanted to come forward, turn the light on to green and welcome to the City Council's chamber meeting.
Thank you, sir.
More, good day, good evening.
Good evening, yes. Mayor, councilors, I'm here to request permission on behalf of the Revive Virginia Board to hold the Food Truck Festival again this year, Saturday, September 20th, 2025. It'll be a slight change from last year. This year, Revive Virginia will be handling the registration, placements, and compliance with Minnesota Department of Health. To ease the burden on the city, we'll take care of that ourselves. So we are hoping to use Chestnut Street from Second Avenue all the way to the driveway of Franz and Bank again this year. So we will still need city employees to assist with putting barricades up, bringing in the garbage cans to service the people attending and to get picnic tables placed for seating.
Okay, very good, thank you. Counsel?
I will move approval of the assistance and closure of the street.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Motley to approve the request for Mr. Seibert from the Revive Virginia Group to conduct the Food Truck Festival on September 20th, 2025 and provide all the in-kind services required to accomplish that. Counselor Bachsneider for discussion.
Thank you and thanks for being here. Super excited to have this event again. The only question I have is probably more so directed for city staff. In previous years, I've seen expenses coming to the city, including newspaper advertising on bill runs. I just want to confirm who would be paying for any newspaper advertising as that wasn't listed in this letter.
The past years, what happened is we ran the ad because we have the account and we billed Revive Virginia for the ad. So then Revive did pay for it. They just don't have an account with the newspaper companies, so they couldn't do it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, so does this, so thank you so much for presenting and we're very excited to have it. Normally when the businesses register, it goes through the city process, so for the licenser and then we collect the, is it $250 or no? It's no fee for the food truck festival itself.
Mayor? Counselor Paulson? So we, there's a fee that we charge, but then that money went to Revive. We processed all the applications as a one-day permit, not the yearly $200 transit merchant.
Okay, so then vendors would go directly to Revive Virginia and not to our city clerk to do that and then you would verify with the state of Minnesota?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So they would handle it the same as they do with Lando.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Seibert.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Item 7 Clinical Lease, 7.1. Anything moving forward or continuing to?
No immediate update.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 8, discussion items. Item 8.1 is to approve the second reading of Chapter 11, Subdivision 1, 1.50 of the City Code of the City of Virginia entitled Administration and Enforcement.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Bachsneider, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Can we have just a brief summary of what this, the chapter is for folks that are just tuning in?
For the fees? Changed our fee schedule, we found out that the ordinance needed to be changed also, so we needed a ordinance to allow us to set the fee schedule by resolution.
So it's planning and zoning permitting stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2 is adopt a resolution to approve the hiring of Patrol Officer Alexander Bryum, contingent upon passing the required testing and background.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley, is there support? Or by Counselor Freedley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt a resolution to approve the hiring of Patrol Officer Sarah Holapa, contingent upon passing the required testing and background.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? By Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freedley?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1, thank you. Item 8.4 is adopt a resolution to approve the hiring of Patrol Officer Samantha Christie, contingent upon passing the required testing and background.
So moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I didn't, that was a nice, fun discussion. Item 9 Committee Reports. Item 9.1, the Committee of the Whole that was held on April 21st, 2025. Britt?
Thank you. At the Committee of the Whole on April 1st, 2025, we approved a resolution to award the bid for Phase 2 of the 2023 Street Improvement Project to KGM in the amount of $5,296,442.50.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the resolution to enter into an agreement with NTS for the construction material testing for Phase 2 of the 2023 Street Improvement Project.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Freedley, supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the resolution to award the 2025 Rotary Park Sanitary Sewer and Seventh Street Storm Sewer Project to Casper Construction in the amount of $297,000.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve the resolution approving the Active Transportation Program Grant Agreement grant terms for the Midway Area Multi-Use Trail Improvement Project.
So moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the payment of the invoice from MINDAP for the city's share of the Highway 53 improvements in the amount of $651,952.20.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve a resolution for transfer request number four from the investment count held with the 4M Fund for the Virginia Public Safety Center Project.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? By Counselor Freedley? Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. What is the total amount on that, dollar amount on that? Thank you.
Hey, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Staff were directed to help conduct a Buildings and Grounds Meeting, which we held today regarding the necessary steam conversions and roof replacements at city buildings. It was a great discussion that we will continue to keep having. It was moved and supported to approve the request from the Library Director for the road closure of Fifth Avenue South on July 10th, 2025 for Big Truck Day and July 31st, 2025 for the summer wrap-up party.
So moved.
Support.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported, was it, I'm sorry, was it? It was moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Beyondich, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve staff updating the utility worker job description.
Comes from Personnel? Okay, thank you. Moved to approve by Counselor Freedley, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to approve posting externally for the digital multimedia technician positions.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freedley?
Aye.
Cuffee?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1, thank you.
Was moved to, moved and supported to move the discussion of the proposed ordinance at MediaCom to a future meeting and I have spoken with our attorney, Robert Voss, and he will join us by phone at the Committee of the Whole next week to discuss the ordinance with us. It was moved and supported to approve the consent form for the Iron Range Half Marathon to be held on August 16th, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley to approve the Half Marathon, is there support? By Counselor Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution declaring items as surplus and allowing for an auction of surplus items.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Beyondich, supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
The final item was, staff were directed to follow through with the actions that were discussed by council in the closed session and we continue on with those same path.
Thank you.
No further items.
No further items on the committee reports, okay, thank you. We'll move to item 10 Commission Liaison Reports, are there any? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report that the Human Rights Commission was involved with the Transgender Day of Visibility last Monday. We had 40 folks that walked around the lake as well as another 30 that attended a, an evening event at Chair downtown Virginia. It was great to see the community supporting each other and really coming together in a time when sometimes that doesn't happen. So thanks to the Human Rights Commission for helping coordinate that and all the folks that put that on Trends Northland, Range Iron Pride, Chair, Human Rights Commission. So just wanted to say thank you to all of them for all that work.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any other reports? We have, okay, yes, Counselor Freedley?
Real quick recap, Counselor Bachsneider and I had the privilege and opportunity to go on the Rams Lobby Day bus down to the Capitol yesterday with 27 other participants. We were fortunate to get some face-to-face time with Senator Farnsworth, Senator Bobby Joe Champion, Representative Warwist, Representative Scraba, and Senator Housechild, all gave us time and attention, which was great. And so if you ever have the opportunity to go down there to be a part of that, please do so. And then the Ranger parter after was an incredible experience as well for networking with people with people that you are working with. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Counsel Beyondich?
It'll be short and sweet. Planning and zoning last night, great meeting. We had public attendance and heard from them, so it's great to see people involved in their communities and helping steer the ship. So thank you to all of them that attended.
Thank you, Counsel Beyondich. Okay, any other Commission Leas on Reports? Okay, we have about a minute or so left before we have to recess. We have three more items, Department head reports and council reports. Is any department have a report they want to give this evening? We already approved yours, Jody, so go ahead. Okay, come on forward, you have 30 seconds, and then we'll, then we'll have to recess.
All right, well, it is National Library Week, so, and today was National Library Workers' Day, so I just want to say thank you to all my staff who make sure that the library stays open, and we have awesome programming. Tomorrow, building blocks after school, we will have everything from your little Legos to build and throw the big ones, so if you have littles that want to come after school, that's great. Genealogy is on Thursday, Storytime on Friday at 10:30, Anime Club is this Saturday at 12:30. We've been doing Tech Mondays, so if you have technology assistance, 11 o'clock on Mondays, which is great. Our Yards of Yarn group has grown, this week we had 22, so if you want to come and do some fiber art, stop on by. And then April is Poetry Month, so you can come and do some blackout poetry on the 16th. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Jody. Short and sweet and compact and full of a lot of facts and information, so thank you very much. Okay, we are going to have to adjourn the council meeting. I would ask that we move the last item on the agenda, the closed session, to the end of our Committee of the Whole meeting next Tuesday, if everybody's amenable to that from the council. Counsel Paulson?
We need to have an action, any action prior to that date for either one of those items in closed session.
Mr. Lindsey?
Mayor, I don't believe that there's any actions required ahead of those, the next Tuesday's meeting. The one item that that does bring up, if the closed session is going to result in an action, we may want to just post a special, as a special meeting following the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
By Counsel Johnson, support? By Counsel Freedley, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I have on my, on 6:00 PM exactly, so we'll move to adjourn the council meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work. So we stand adjourned, thank you very much.